Once again, we are about to start. If everybody can please find their seats. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, please find your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, please find your seats. We are ready to resume.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. Now, I would like to call our next panel. And in order to accommodate everyone, we kindly ask to limit your testimony to 10... Oh, I'm sorry, to two minutes. And our next panelists will be Carolyn Maloney, Ali Finn, Lo Van de Valk, Mina Elias. And I apologize if I mispronounce any names. The handwriting is very hard to read. Simon Bankhoff. So, I believe we don't have all panelists here. So, I'm... Please come. Oh, okay. No problem. Please start when you're ready.
First of all, I'd like to thank very much Chairwoman Jennifer Gutierrez and Keith Powers, the Majority Leader, for holding this hearing on such a critically important issue for all New Yorkers. My name is Carolyn Maloney, and I'm a former member of Congress from the 12th Congressional District. And I'm here to express my concerns about the 5G towers that are being proposed for our city. If the goal is to bring the Internet to underserved populations, the 5G towers are the wrong solution. The towers provide mobile broadband for pedestrians and people in vehicles, but only limited home broadband service. What's more, there's no assurance that the towers are being placed where service would otherwise be lacking. It makes absolutely no sense to make these big and in-your-face obtrusive towers on the street when other solutions are available: small cells on existing street furniture, antennas on rooftops, which is exactly what the cellphone companies are already doing. At a recent Community Board 7 land use meeting, the Office of Technology and Innovation said that the range of the towers is just 500 feet and that you must have a direct line of sight to the antenna to use the towers and that the 5G signal will not penetrate walls. Only those who happen to have windows in direct line of sight of the antenna can receive the service. And then they would likely need another device to boost the signal so it can be used in a home. We know from the Office of Technology and Innovation that as many as 36% of New Yorkers lack home broadband or mobile broadband or both. Unfortunately, after the cancellation of the Internet Master Plan, the city has no comprehensive plan to ensure that all New Yorkers have home and mobile broadband. Not having broadband at a home is particularly problematic. Children cannot do homework or learn to code on a phone. Big Apple Connect, which is only available to public housing residents, is funded for just three years and fails to reach a huge segment of the underserved population. When kids are sitting literally next to towers to do their homework, that's evidence that we need a better plan. The towers aren't a reasonable solution, particularly in bad weather or at night. New York needs a plan to make sure that anyone who wants broadband at home can get it, that both service and equipment are affordable, and that people who need training can get it. We could cancel the 32-foot towers and work on a plan that actually brings affordable broadband into people's homes where they need it. And I yield back.
Thank you. Stick around, we have questions.
Good afternoon. My name is Ali Finn, and I am the senior researcher and organizer at the Surveillance Resistance Lab. We focus on how government use of technological solutions impacts democracy and equity. The lab has major concerns regarding how the LINK NYC program has failed to meet its promises of equitably delivering high-quality Wi-Fi to all New York residents. Instead, we have learned that the cost of free Wi-Fi was the implementation of a data mining and surveillance infrastructure throughout New York City. The program is a case study in the challenges the city faces when transparency and accountability are not at the forefront of our large-scale technological solutions. In other words, how can we ensure that tech solutions do not become police and corporate surveillance tools and exacerbate inequality? LINK NYC epitomizes what the city loses if we do not consider the risks to civil and human rights at the core of digital infrastructure rollout. I want to highlight a few key issues that demonstrate the failures in deploying this program, focusing not only on the program's failure to meet the goal of greater access, but also the data sharing and surveillance concerns. We are deeply concerned at the heightened levels of surveillance that the kiosks can facilitate. A recent audit conducted by KPMG on behalf of OTI found that City Bridge was not anonymizing the MAC addresses of users. This is a major violation of the existing privacy policy. Another major concern is the use of cameras and upwards of 30 total sensors that collect data in the kiosks. The business model itself creates vulnerabilities. Data collection is the means by which the program can be made accessible without payment from users. These kiosks collect massive amounts of data from users, including names, emails, IP addresses, MAC addresses, browser type and version, among other data, as a function of their use. The privacy policy from LINK NYC uses language that softens the sheer volume of data that is collected from each user. But in reality, LINK NYC extracts this data for the primary purpose of selling it to advertisers for highly tailored, context-aware advertising. And not only does the collection of personal data and the presence of cameras present privacy concerns, but it also presents a major concern that LINK NYC can fuel criminalization, which I would be happy to speak to. I'll pause there and can follow up if there are questions.
Thank you both so much. Carolyn, thank you so much. Do we have another panel? Yes, oh, I apologize, go for it. Hi.
I think Lo Van de Valk was actually before me.
Okay. Yeah, just make sure the light is red.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, for this hearing. I'm president of Carnegie Hill Neighbors. It's located in the Upper East Side. It's a volunteer organization existing since 1970, concerned about landmarks issues and quality of life issues. We strongly oppose the installation of 32-foot 5G towers in our neighborhood and elsewhere in the city. They are out of scale in height and bulk compared to other street furniture. They are not aesthetically designed. Many people say they look garish and even ominous. They call attention to themselves and are completely out of context and inappropriate in our historic districts and our nearby residential areas as well. Initially, 18 towers were proposed for the Upper East Side, essentially the Community Board 8 Manhattan District. Of these, an astonishing 10, 10 of the 18, would be placed in Carnegie Hill. Subsequently, this has reduced to a current number of four, although that number could, of course, change back again. We have no certainty. One of our board members, Kevin Rowe, who was an industry analyst in telecommunications, points to City Bridge involvement since 2014 with the introduction of communications kiosks and now in charge of the 5G tower rollout. He argues that the big mobile operators, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon, have long been deploying 5G at existing rooftop cellular sites and through small cells, small antennas placed on streetlights and traffic utility poles. And he thinks that's... And we feel that that is a way that should be explored more actively, even by City Bridge. Thank you. But I want to say one final thing. I think ultimately, direct fiber links to individual apartments and homes is ultimately the solution. And I think your committee should be tasked, really, to explore this independently or... Because you have access to the great advisors. And your focus can make a huge difference in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mina Elias, and I'm a resident of Community Board 7. And I'm here to express my concerns about City Bridge's 5G towers. They are a poor substitute for a comprehensive plan to ensure that all New Yorkers have affordable Internet service. I'm aware that currently there are no towers proposed in my neighborhood. But at a recent Community Board 7 meeting, OTI made clear that some of the 2,000 or more towers that will be erected by 2026 are likely to be sighted in my area. The towers are intrusive street furniture taking up space on our already overcrowded sidewalks. What's more, OTI says they can be placed as close as eight feet from people's windows. Although sighting most of the towers in underserved communities sounds like a way to bridge the digital divide, these towers are primarily designed to serve pedestrians and people in vehicles, not people at home. There is no comprehensive plan to ensure broadband for the 36% of New Yorkers who currently lack mobile or home broadband or both. Many people lack broadband because of cost. And there are programs available to defray costs, including the Federal Affordable Connectivity Program. One way to expand broadband adoption would be for the city to do more to educate people about the availability of that program. Most New York neighborhoods already have good 5G service. And yet, many of the City Bridge towers are slated for areas with good service. There's been very little consultation with the public about where the towers are needed. The city should demand fewer towers in neighborhoods that do not need additional service. These towers are gigantic, they are ugly, and they are impossible to overlook. And for areas that lack service, there are better alternatives that do not require massive street furniture. We need a better plan, one less reliant on placing towers at street level and more focused on ensuring that everyone who wants broadband can have it without going into debt. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. And again, just want to thank both Mina and Carolyn for being here, certainly miss working together. And Carolyn, you brought up the Internet Master Plan, which I really appreciate. Because as you know, this administration has rolled back all of that. And you also mentioned Big Apple Connect, which, in my opinion, you know, it's a good way to connect folks, but it's not doing enough for equity. I think also on the piece of digital inclusion, my concern about not just the sightings, but the future of the sightings. We're going to have these telecom agencies storing their equipment, providing the service. Well, that doesn't mean that the service is going to be free for folks, right? And so, the whole sighting of it being in an equity district, I think is nice in theory, but the manifestation of how that will be providing a service is not equitable in nature. So, there certainly is a conflict there. Carolyn, my question to you is, and you know this community so well, what are some of the things that you're hearing from your neighbors, from folks, about what makes sense? You mentioned it briefly in your testimony about where some of these towers can go. But what are some other ways that you think your neighbors in your district want to see digital inclusion and connectivity reflected in the city? Or certainly in their own neighborhoods?
Well, I would say that we need, as a country, to have broadband to all of our homes. Our young people need to have access to it. They need to study with it. They need to learn with it. When I went to school, all you needed was a number-two pencil. Now, they need Internet, computers, they need broadband. We're competing in a worldwide economic situation, and every child should have access to it. What I find so puzzling is that in my career in the City Council, and it's a great honor to be back here in the City Council today with you, when I represented East Harlem, I also represented Greenpoint and Williamsburg, Brooklyn, and also Astoria, Queens. And yet, the area that has the most connection right now is the Upper East Side. I have entire areas where they don't have any connection. And I don't understand why they're not going to the areas that need the connection, that need the Internet. The Upper East Side is connected, but East Harlem is not. Astoria, Queens is not. Portions of Brooklyn and Greenpoint, Williamsburg are not. So, these are areas that need to be connected, and we need to look at the entire plan. Everybody says, "Well, we'll connect it eventually." Well, why aren't you connecting it now? Why are you putting, as Mr. Lo said, 18 in one small little historic district and none in East Harlem, none on the West Side, and none in Greenpoint? Or there is one, I believe, in Greenpoint and Williamsburg. So, the sighting of it doesn't seem to make sense. Also, my community is... There's a lot of foot traffic. There's a lot of museums. There are a lot of people who come that are visitors, are tourists, I'd say. And so, they're putting them in the tourist areas, but not in the homes where... You understand what I'm saying? And what I find problematic, I think we need it. I'm all for connection. I'm all for broadband. I'm all for the Internet. But they're not connecting the areas that are not connected. And what is most troubling to me, from my research and what I heard today, is that it's for the transit community, for the people in cars, for the people walking by, not for the people in the buildings. And to get into the buildings, you have to have sight level with the tower. I mean, so it's not getting to where you need it. Now, my friends have told me that they see young people, like, sitting next to the towers to try to do their homework.
Yeah.
And I'm glad they have a way to do their homework, but they should not have to sit on the street. And it's dangerous, I would say, too, after a certain hour. They should be in their homes, doing their homework.
Yeah.
And I see it almost as a national security concern. I see it as an economic concern, that every child should have access to broadband. So, we need a plan that is not connecting the tourists and the motorists, but is connecting, I would say, probably the most important would be the young people learning and then probably the businesses that are being operated and people are working from their homes and they need it to conduct their jobs. But so, I don't understand it. Why are we catering to tourists and motorists and not to the young people in their homes wanting to do their homework?
Thank you. Always the advocate, and absolutely right. Thank you so much. And thank you for... Also, at the same time, also showing your support for the need for universal broadband and connectivity. I appreciate it. Ali, my question to you, kind of touched on it a little bit in your testimony. What can you share about what your concerns are as far as security and safety for these towers and these kiosks?
Yeah, thank you so much for the question. And Chair Gutierrez, thank you for staying and listening to all of our concerns.
I have to. But I'm happy to.
Still, you know, thank you. Thank you for doing it. I think I started to speak a little bit about the way that these towers can fuel criminalization when supposedly their mission is to bridge the digital divide, which, as was so clearly stated, is such a strong need. LINK NYC is explicit that the company will comply with requests of disclosure if required by law, which includes subpoenas and court orders. We do not know if the NYPD has access to LINK NYC data through other means. And based on the amount of information they collect, which I listed earlier, which includes a lot of personal data that can be de-anonymized quite easily. We also don't know if the data that LINK NYC is collecting from the public could be sold to data broker companies, third parties, that make their profits by extracting and repackaging and selling our data off into law enforcement. Data brokers resell data to ICE. So, we're just not sure of the scope that could be possible at the moment. And audits and even, you know, a young college student have exposed a lot of the dangers in the code itself, which I'm happy to go into more if that would be helpful.
Thank you. I think as far as the... You emphasized the scope that we just don't know. And we heard from City Bridge that there's not much data that they can even collect, right? They have names and emails, I believe, is the extent for anyone logging into the Wi-Fi. What, in your opinion, does that, A, seem like that is accurate? And B, what is... What are the potential harms to even having that small amount of data? Be, you know, public or accessible?
Yeah, I was quite concerned to hear that in the testimony. You know, they do collect email address and, I believe, name in the signup process. But I have the privacy policy on my phone right in front of me now. And it includes other information that is collected, which is IP address, MAC address, browser type, timezone setting, browser plugin, operating system and platform, device type, information about your visits, including the full URL click stream. I'm not even reading all of this. Information used to facilitate your use of services, such as access to third-party websites. I'm sure that they have explanations for why this is collected. But this is a massive tracking of their 13 million, you know, quote-unquote subscribers use. And a lot of what we believe that is going towards is, you know, targeted ads. We don't see this surveillance... This form of surveillance and data extraction as providing benefits to city residents, but rather to help City Bridge increase their advertising revenues.
Well, thank you all so much. And thank you to this panel for sticking around. I hope you all get home very safely. Thank you.
Thank you again. And now, I would like to move to our next panel. And we... I just want to make an announcement that we will call all witnesses who are here in person first and then move to witnesses who are here with us virtually. And our next panel will be Reverend Conrad Tillard, Ken Granderson, Anthony Folio, Louisa Lobas. Any order is fine.
There we go. Hello?
Perfect.
Thank you. My name is Ken Granderson, and I was born and raised in the Bedford-Stuyvesant section of Brooklyn. After graduating from MIT in 1985, I've been a digital citizen since the early 1990s and was able to quit my tech job and become a tech entrepreneur in 1994 up to this day because I am digitally connected. Since then, I've been a passionate supporter of the power of technology for inner-city communities in general and because technology connects us across geography, culture, and class specifically for communities of color and other historically underserved communities. In 1997, I started my current business, blackfacts.com, specifically to ensure that communities of color were represented online. And today, from the first up until June 19th, because of LINK NYC, we're informing city residents about the Juneteenth holiday on the 2,000 kiosks around the city. And this past Black History Month, we did the same thing for every day of the year. I mean, of the month, excuse me. As a longtime digital citizen, I'm always connected. But many of our neighbors, especially in areas like my Bed-Stuy again, where I live, I came back home, do not have unlimited data plans or Internet via cable that many of us here might take for granted. At the kiosk on Fulton Street that I passed to get on the C train to come here today, above all the shops that I frequent, people live there. If the people who use the laundromat in the... That the kiosk is right next to knew about 5G, they could use it there when they're doing laundry with their kids. And the families who live above the kiosk, if they can't afford Internet at home, free 5G could be the difference between their kids graduating and... or not. So, real-world use case, you know, I'm connected. But a month or so ago, I'm in an unfamiliar part of town at night. My phone ran out of power. I had my cord, and I was able to get an Uber, thanks to LINK NYC. So, thank you for listening. And because every day is Black History, happy birthday to Nikki Giovanni, Gwendolyn Brooks, and of course, Prince.
Oh, RIP. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of New York City Council. My name is Anthony Folio, business representative of Local 3, and I'm proud to testify on behalf of Local Union Number 3, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and its nearly 28,000 members about LINK New York City program. We've seen firsthand how the LINK New York City program greatly benefits business, workers, unions, New York City residents, and tourists alike. LINK New York City is already the largest free municipal Wi-Fi program in the United States. And this has been achieved at zero cost to taxpayers. It is my understanding that over 10 million New Yorkers have visited, have used the free Wi-Fi network, which has become a lifeline for access to the Internet, free nationwide calling, 911 emergency service, and city services as well. This is critically important as we continue to recover from the COVID pandemic that exposed so many weaknesses in our city's social fabric around digital connectivity. Over nearly 125 years, Local Union Number 3 has helped build New York City by working on its most iconic structures, providing job opportunities for our diverse membership and quality training for young people and promoting the highest standards of worker safety in the industry. Over the past several years, LINK New York City program has been a massive driver of economic output and job creation for many New Yorkers, especially our union members. Through our collective bargaining agreement with our New York NICA contractor partners, many of whom are minority and women-owned businesses, Local Union Number 3 workers have earned living wages for the hundreds of thousands of hours of work they have performed and will continue to perform under this program. We're excited for the next phase, LINK 5G. LINK 5G will employ more electricians, pay more middle-class wages and benefits, and connect more people, especially those living in underserved communities across the five boroughs, to 5G technology. This will bring better cell service, faster data speeds, and enhanced broadband access to historically underserved communities. This includes many neighborhoods where our members work and live. We're glad that City and City Bridge have figured out an innovative way to continue and expand this critical program. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of Local Union Number 3, IBW, and nearly 28,000 members of the electrical industry. Thank you.
Can you turn your mic on? I'm sorry. Just make sure the light is on.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez and members of the Committee on Technology, for allowing me to testify today. My name is Reverend Conrad Tillard, and I am a proud member and I'm proud to represent Black Clergy for Economic Empowerment, which is a group dedicated to ensuring communities of color have equal professional education and economic opportunities. The reality is that in 2023, Internet access is not a luxury. It is a necessity for school, work, and staying connected with loved ones. It should be considered a utility, like running water and electricity. But New York's Internet infrastructure is segregated, like its schools, with low-income communities and communities of color disproportionately affected by the digital divide. The City Council's own data shows that communities of color have limited access to high-speed broadband service. Just look at areas like Melrose, Mott Haven, and Port Morris in the Bronx, East Harlem in Manhattan and Jamaica, St. Albans and Hollis in Queens. And we've already heard Bedford-Stuyvesant in East New York, Bedford-Stuyvesant where I live, where more than 41% of households still lack access to broadband. This is not acceptable in 2023, especially compared to Park Slope and Carroll Gardens in Brooklyn or the Upper East Side or Upper West Side in Manhattan, where over 80% of households have access. What does all this mean? have access. What does all this mean? Lower-income communities of color are suffering from, most from the digital divide exacerbating existing disparities. Link NYC and especially Link 5G program are working to bridge the digital divide and ensure all communities have equal access to high-speed broadband at home and on the go. I want to commend Link NYC for planning to install 90% of the new Link 5G kiosk north of 96th Street in Manhattan and in the Bronx, Queens, Brooklyn, and Staten Island, and for focusing the first wave of their deployment on equity areas. I'm almost finished, but I also want to make sure everyone here understands, we need this infrastructure everywhere. New York is a five-borough organism. None of our neighborhoods are walled off. So, while some of your constituents might not think they need Link 5G in their communities, the person who works in their corner bodega, or delivers their takeout, or the kid from Crown Heights or Bed-Stuy visiting a museum, they deserve to be able to get online. They need Link 5G. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez and esteemed members of the New York City Council Committee on Technology. My name is Luisa Lopez, and I serve as President of the Latino Social Work Coalition and Scholarship Fund. Today, I am here to testify about the tremendous impact of the Link NYC program and the incoming Link NYC 5G deployment in providing culturally competent mental health support for all New Yorkers. The Link NYC program has enabled nonprofit organizations like ours to connect with the diverse population of this city. With access to the numerous Link NYC kiosks, we have been able to deliver culturally competent mental health support and information to the over 8 million residents of New York City. Without this program, reaching such a vast and diverse audience would have been extremely challenging. Our coalition partnered with Link NYC during Mental Health Awareness Month, emphasizing the importance of culturally competent social workers and mental health professionals. Leveraging the Link NYC program, we circulated vital information on the 988 crisis line to New Yorkers experiencing mental health crises, information which you know can help save countless lives. Internet access has become as necessary as telephone access was in the past, and it is essential that the city invest in internet and data access as technology advances. This is an issue of equity that affects the lives of all New Yorkers, particularly those in vulnerable and under-resourced communities. While concerns about the design of 5G towers exist, these concerns can be addressed by having more transparency in siding of the towers and allowing for more robust community input. I urge you to recognize the significance of the Link NYC program and the upcoming deployment of 5G towers. These initiatives bridge the digital divide and empower organizations like ours to deliver culturally competent support to all New Yorkers. Let's embrace the potential of technology to ensure equitable access to high-speed internet. Together, we can build a New York City that thrives on inclusivity, connectivity, and the well-being of all its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Luisa, and thank you to all the panelists. I have just two questions. I applaud the challenge that it is and was of being, for being a person of color in tech, and certainly admire the pioneer work needed to really create a website about Black Facts. I love seeing you here. You're very active in this community. Thank you. And you, sorry, that you were, you also represent Bed-Stuy. My question is, I certainly support expanding connectivity. It's especially important in communities of color. It's especially important that they're doing it in culturally responsible and multi, in multi-languages. So, my question is, how can we make sure that just access to it is equitable, right? Because there are certain instances where people can access it from their home or from a business, but ideally, right, they want, the only way it can like optimize that it's functioning is if people are outside closest to these towers. How can we make even that more equitable? And for a neighborhood like beautiful Bed-Stuy, that does have a lot of historic blocks and landmarking, would you say that the design of this tower is contextual to certain parts of the neighborhood? You can answer however you want.
Well, I would just say that, you know, I'm just a minister. I'm not an architect, or I am not-
Not just.
-aesthetically as sophisticated as some here, but I'm greatly encouraged by the fact that 90% of these towers are going to go up in underserved areas because, aside from some of the aesthetic concerns, and I know that's important, particularly in landmark blocks, we have them in Bedford-Stuyvesant, what's important is that we have a tremendous digital divide in this city. You know, the most segregated schools in America in New York City, and we have that same digital, that segregation in terms of access to the digital space. And so, that's what's needed, and it's needed now, and that's my greatest concern.
Thank you.
Actually, the home that I grew up in actually is one of the, in a historical area. So, I understand that. I also feel like the people who are there now, the needs of the people now, my personal belief, you know, are more important than the, than keeping things the same forever and ever and ever. May not be a popular thing. I don't, I'm not one who cares about popular opinions. You know, I speak, you know, what I believe is true. In terms of engaging folks, I think the simplest answer is, if I were doing it, I'd go to a kiosk and I would talk to some people who are right there, and engage folks who live there, who, you know, who ring the doorbell.
Okay. City Bridge, you listening?
Talk to people.
Got the whole outreach plan right here for you. Okay. Okay. The goal is to make it more accessible, right? The goal is to reduce all barriers to connectivity. And what we're hearing, you know, fairly new is we're hearing kind of mixed, you know, it can, you can't access it here, you cannot access it here. So, I think even that alone, that piece is not necessarily blanket. It's not equitable across the board just yet.
No, no, it's not. But you know what? Even when, in my remarks, there's a, there's a laundromat right next to the one, you know, that I walk, that I'm going to walk by, you know, later today. Maybe work with some of the businesses. Let them know that, hey, did you know that your business is right by free Wi-Fi? You know, there's some restaurants, you know, there, they have outdoor seating. So, maybe, you know, work with the merchants in the area to make sure that they let people know.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Well, thank, oh, did you want to add?
I did. Thank you so much. To the two points of your question, there's, there's the question of whether or not these kiosks are actually accessible to people that are in their homes and not just folks in cars or passersby. The, that question can be answered not by, let's just get rid of the whole program, and let's get rid of the kiosks, and let's get rid of the towers. It's okay. So then, what do we need to do in order to make them more accessible? What does City Bridge or anybody else, what can they do in order to make it accessible? Let's have that conversation. And then, for the question of it being an eyesore or something that folks just don't want to see, is it in context with their local community? You know, back in the day, telephone booths were not in context with the community. Hot dog carts are not in context with the community. City bike racks are not in context with the community, and yet-
Don't you bring up city bikes.
And yet, these have become fixtures that are iconic to our city. We can't imagine New York City without them. I certainly can't. So, you know, if we need to change the design, if that's something that we need, you know, an architect to come in and help guide us to more designs that are contextually in line with whatever community it is that they're asking for, then great, let's do that. But the answer, I don't think, can be, let's just get rid of the whole program because it's, it's not perfect right this second.
That's right. All right. Well, thank you all so much to the panelists. Get home safely. Thank you for sticking around.
Thank you again for your testimony. And now, I'm calling our next panel. And our next panelists will be Odette Wilkins, Ruth Fantasy Moss, Elizabeth Fox, Teresa Wisterhall, and John Fantasy.
Please start when you're ready.
I guess I'm going first. All right. I'm Odette Wilkins, and I'm a resident of Queens CB6. That's Forest Hills and Rego Park. I'm also President and General Counsel of Wired Broadband, Inc., a nonprofit in Queens advocating safe technology for the public. I've also been a technology attorney for the past 20 years, having represented many multinational corporations. I am familiar with the benefits of technology as well as the risks. Community boards are increasingly rising in opposition to the Link 5G cell towers. 16 community boards to date have disapproved or called for moratoria. This represents up to 800 community board members and an average of about 2 million residents. That is more than a quarter of the New York City population. The message is clear. They do not need the 5G towers and do not want them. Even equity districts are bristling at 5G towers, just to name a few of the 16 districts. Brooklyn CB1, Greenpoint and Williamsburg, CB4, Bushwick, Manhattan CB9, Morningside Heights, CBs 10 and 11, East Harlem, Queens CB1, Astoria, and Long Island City. Bridging the digital divide is supposed to enhance social welfare. But the Federal Housing Administration will not provide federal mortgages for homes within the fall zone of a cell tower. For these towers at three stories high, there's an insufficient fall zone when they are as close as eight feet to a structure. Property values go down about 20% near cell towers. The inability to get a mortgage and the devaluation of property do not enhance social welfare. Also, in case of structural failure, a tower can crash into buildings and pedestrians. City Bridge has failed to comply with federal law based on the FCC's recent notice. Wouldn't that mean that they are in material breach of their franchise agreement? Why is there no moratorium on construction? And actually, an eyewitness saw workers at one of the towers after the notice was given installing antennas. Under federal case law in New York, for federal preemption to apply, telecoms must show a gap in phone service. OTI and City Bridge have confirmed they have no records of gaps. The FCC rule that allows telecoms into communities based on capacity needs for future demand does not comply with federal law and does not apply in New York jurisdictions. Extonet versus Flower Hill, 2022. Why then is OTI telling community boards that 5G is federally mandated? It is not. The Public Design Commission conditioned approval of a pilot to install 200 towers on getting feedback from the community. Communities are speaking out in opposition. Therefore, as a proof of concept, the Link 5G project has failed and should be abandoned for a better plan for New York City residents with meaningful community input and approval before entering into any formal agreement. Thank you.
Hi. Thanks very much. My name's John Fantasy. I've lived here all my life since God was in diapers. I'm just, I want to talk about something I've witnessed. My sister is a brilliant lyricist, and she's writing a book and the lyrics with Shelton Bechtin on a life of Frederick Douglass. The reason I mention this is that's a big challenge. And let's couple with that challenge is the fact that one day, several years ago, she went down into a basement where they had just installed what she was told were smart meters. And she looked, bent over, looked at it, and she was zapped into next week. She was out of commission for months. Consider this. She cannot use a cellphone. She cannot look at a cellphone, be next to one. Same with computers. Cannot look, work on one. She had a complete wireless radiation hit. She is not unique to this, and it comes in varying, people are affected in varying ways. I just wanted to talk about the results of what can happen, real life. On my own note, I've seen the towers. I've seen pictures of the towers. They're Orwellian. They look like hell. That's all I got.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is-
Ruth, may you turn it on?
Oh, sorry. Can I start again? Hi, my name is Ruth Fantasy Moss, and that was my brother John. We grew up on the streets of New York, fourth-generation natives with a love for the city that has no bounds. Powerful 5G monopoles are ruining our New York by turning it into a 24/7 danger zone. The condition I have, that he described, is not a rarity. We are an omen, the tip of the iceberg waiting for the Titanic. I'm sorry, I'm speaking, but I don't think they're listening, so I'm going to wait. Hope you don't mind. I'm going to go back because I think you were occupied, and I really want you to hear what I had to say. Okay? All right. We are native New Yorkers for four generations. We have a love for the city that has no bounds. Powerful 5G monopoles are ruining our New York by turning it into a 24/7 danger zone. The condition I have, that my brother John described, is not a rarity. We are an omen, the tip of the iceberg waiting for the Titanic. We are the living proof that a major health disaster awaits us. Those who are not impacted in the short term, like I am, will be vulnerable in the long term to cancers, brain tumors, and other disease, just as 9/11 first responder injuries have risen five, 10, even 20 years later. Where are the 5G safety studies? Telecom CEOs have testified there are none. Where are the peer-reviewed studies documenting harm? Too many to count in the NIH's own database. Studies that the profit-driven telecom industry has declined to notice. In the words of Frank Clegg, former president of Microsoft Canada, "I've met with scientific experts around the world and have concluded wireless technology is not safe. I am especially concerned with 5G and the impact on children." The industry will grumble, but they will pivot if they are incented to do so. It is up to government to provide this motivation. By restricting placement of telecommunications antennas near homes, schools, and other sensitive areas, industry will be forced to investigate safer alternatives that are cheaper in the wrong run. And I'll just add, they have the 2.3 trillion to do it. Technology has brought us into the future, but that future will not be realized if it isn't safe. Without safety, access, inclusion, need, connectivity are hollow benefits. Here in this room, at this hearing, you hold the greatest city in the world in your hands. Please take immediate action to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, for allowing me to speak and for your excellent questions this afternoon. I'm honored to be here. I'm Elizabeth Fox, and I'm representing, representing the building where I live, 1115 Fifth Avenue. Our building is united in very strong opposition against the installation of the 32-foot-tall towers, including the one planned for right in front of our building at 93rd Street. In addition, I want to be clear that I absolutely support equitable access to high-speed internet, but I do not think the current 5G tower plan does anything to achieve this. First, I strongly believe that these towers do not belong in residential communities where existing infrastructure can accommodate current and future telecom equipment. Making use of existing infrastructure is both a precedent in our city and how countless other cities have rolled out 5G services. In fact, in the intersection in front of our building where they're proposing a tower just feet away, there is already 5G equipment in place on four intersection lampposts. And accordingly, our building has excellent cellular coverage. Second, these 32-foot-pull imposing towers do not belong in designated historic districts, particularly Carnegie Hill, where residents take lots of pride in the community's ongoing commitment to historic preservation and beauty. The character of our historic neighborhood attracts residents and visitors alike, and we do not want imposing towers marring the neighborhood's beauty and commitment to preservation. Third, it's deeply troubling to me that City Bridge has already ignored the rules and regulations for their proposed plan by installing towers prior to a Section 106 review by state authorities under FCC policy. This blatant disregard for the law and procedure shows that this for-profit entity is not operating in good faith for the collective community, despite whatever they may say. We desperately need this esteemed council to compel an end to the current plan and demand better from OTI. Just really quickly on a personal level, I live on the second floor with my three children, and the proposed tower will be 13 feet away from where my child sleeps. We purchased this apartment before there was any tower sighting, and honestly, had we known, we would have never, ever bought this apartment. To top it all off, of course, we're planning this large renovation, and as part of that, because it's a historic building, we have to jump through multiple hoops to accommodate the preservation rules, which frankly, we went into eyes wide open because we, we bought the building because of its historic character. So the idea that now, it's just an extreme double standard that now a for-profit tech consortium can install a 5G tower that shows absolutely no regard for the historic nature of the neighborhood, and it will degrade and crowd our streets, but us, individual family apartment owners, have to adhere to strenuous and costly landmark designation rules? It's just simply unfair. And so I hope that common sense prevails and districts will be spared these deeply obtrusive and unwanted towers.
Hello, everyone. My name's Teresa Westerdahl. I live in Crown Heights, Brooklyn, down the street from Ebbets Field. I am here to give my on-the-ground field report regarding the 5G towers that have popped up in my neighborhood. At the end of the summer of 2022, LaShawn, Todd, some of my neighbors, brought it to my neighborhood group's attention that these towers were going up. And they inquired within our block association and with the CB9, they wrote to OTI, and were not really given anything but a link. We've been hoping that OTI, Lincoln Voice, anybody would come and talk to us at the community board, and they have not, not at all. The two towers were up and are activated, and we had no ability to talk about their location, nothing, nothing at all. So my, the community board, CB9, has produced a resolution, again, for a moratorium against the 5G towers, which, which I have. And just the two towers that came up, one's in, they, they say like the commercial overlay. That means there's a huge tower right next to where people are living on a corner, and there's another one. These are very close to where I live, is on a, in a commercial district, and there isn't really any housing around. And anybody who would have to use it would have to, you know, you could plug in this one little slot. And, you know, I guess we're concerned about the issues everybody else brought up, but also the, the heat impact and the electrical usage. How, I understand these, we use a lot of electricity. How does that affect the grid? And I just want to make a point that I was in Chinatown the day before yesterday, and I was with a friend of mine who knows I'm working on this 5G tower issue. And then we, I saw this 5G tower there that was within six feet, six feet, like I walked with my, my little shoes, you know, and measured it with my feet, six feet from, from, I have a picture. I took it just two days ago, so close to where these people are living. And this is a historic district with people's homes, right there that the tower is. So I'd like you to look at the, the resolution that the community board, nine Environmental Protection Committee, of which I'm a member, the whole board voted on it, and we have it. I'm new to this, so I'm a little nervous, so sorry.
Is this a CB9 in Manhattan?
In Brooklyn.
In Brooklyn, I'm sorry.
In Brooklyn, near Ebbets, near Ebbets Field. That's, that's where I, I live. A community board nine is like several districts. Crystal Hudson is one of our council member, Rita Joseph, and I can't remember her name, Diane.
It's all right. It's all right. No, no worries. It's not, don't worry about it. I just, I wanted to clarify. For the, for, for all of you, what is the role that your community boards, besides, and you mentioned a resolution, but what is the role that the community boards have played in helping to communicate with you all about these sightings and the process that you can take? And if there was no community board, what do you think, what do you think, City Bridge, how should they be communicating in a more seamless way with you all?
I'm speaking from the Upper East Side. I mean, thankfully, we have a very, very robust organization in Carnegie Hill neighbors, and so frankly, it hasn't been City Bridge or even really the community board, but the, the driving spreader of knowledge and information has been our local neighborhood organization. And the other, and people are so, you know, I think unique to our neighborhood where people are frankly obsessed with the historical nature of our community. This issue is, is maddening to almost every single person that lives or visits there. And so thankfully, we have that. But I will say, I have attended the community board meetings. There was an information session that City Bridge did for, for the community board, and I do think that the timing of them has been very suspect and that they, there was one right before the Fourth of July. Like, they seem to give little notice, and on top of it, they are just terribly timed for, for people who maybe, they seem to spring up around holidays, so to speak, when people may be traveling.
The installation of them?
No, not even, I, thank God, we don't have any that I'm aware of in Carnegie Hill, but the, the community board meetings or the opportunities to speak about them.
Oh, for them to present.
Yes. Or where, like, City Bridge. And so that, that goes to my opinion, like, these things are sort of coming in, like, under the cover of darkness, and, and it just suggests that things really aren't on the up and up. If, if not, why, why be so secretive and, you know, obfuscating what's really happening?
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we've also hadn't had the, the feedback from the community board that we wish there's local organizations, like, as our neighborhood association, MTOP, FLAC, other organizations like that from the neighborhood that we've gotten information from, including the fact that we have over 200 tower, 200 of these towers slated for our particular district, 200. And that information was garnered by local residents' research.
Okay.
So it's, it's a lot, you know, that's come, and it came up suddenly, and we aren't getting answers. And I guess it's, you know, the way that the towers are, they're so big, if, if it gets hit, it's going to, it's going to hit either a resident, a car-
Yeah.
-a building. And the, the heat generated from them is worrisome. There's so many concerns, and, you know, they haven't been addressed, so.
To address also your question, Chair Gutierrez, the community boards are only given 60 days. That is not, that is not a sufficient amount of time because you have to factor in, the committee has to review it, then they have to bring it to the board if there are any questions, if there are presentations. It may go well past 60 days. Plus, this is the first time they're, they're ever hearing about it. They don't know about the technology. It's like a tot, you know, they have to go from zero to 100. That doesn't give them enough time to really understand what is going on, and then they have to make a decision before they have full knowledge. The other thing that's a bit troublesome is that I was, I was at a community board meeting last week, it was Manhattan Community Board seven, and I was very surprised that that meeting where OTI presented, and not OTI, the City Bridge presented, was asked not to be recorded. And the only thing that we could do is put questions ahead of time that OTI would field in terms of what City Bridge would, would answer. There was no allowance for community input or community members being able to pose questions. The same thing happened in my community board, Queens Community Board six, where OTI and City Bridge came to a closed, basically a closed executive committee meeting, even though the public was allowed to watch. We were not allowed to pose any questions. There has to be full community participation. There has to be recordings. If they ask for any sessions not to be recorded, that is already suspect. What is it that they have to hide? People cannot come to the meetings. We already know because of COVID and other things that people, that, that these things are recorded so that people who cannot come can see it afterwards. That was not afforded to the community board last week. And I did not have an opportunity to ask questions directly of OTI and City Bridge at my community board. So, so this process has to be completely opened up. This has been a closed process. And not only that, but when I was at another community board and they were talking about the health issues, OTI corrected the community boards and said that, "We're not here really to talk about anything else other than citing. Let us know where you want us to cite this." But that was, that completely did not address the issue that the community had. Now, the Public Design Commission specifically gave a directive to OTI for this pilot program that they were supposed to come back to the PDC with community input. They were supposed to go out and get community input. They did not say to exclude community input except for the citing. So they're not getting the full information, and they're not complying with the PDC's directive. So that is what needs to change. The procedure has to change.
One minor point on the sighting, too. Where, where I am, a lot of people who are on Fifth Avenue, because across the street is Central Park, is pushing back on the idea why are there towers being installed 13 feet from the residential buildings and not on the other side of Fifth Avenue where nobody, no newborn or three-year-old is sleeping? And there's been no real response from that, nor has there been, none of the sites have moved, just literally across the street to give a little more space.
Thank you. Thank you to the, to the panelists. Thank you for testifying today. Get home safely. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, every panelists, for your excellent testimonies. And I'm about to call our next panel. And our next panelists will be Lisa Soren and Susan Pearlman.